Thanks Emily.
So much goes into the warrant huh? So much work.
It is.
It's a learning experience.
It's nitpicky when you get right to it.
All right, good evening everyone. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2017. We have a somewhat short agenda tonight. We're starting with meeting minutes of three dates in January and February.
So I'll move approval of the meeting minutes for January 18th, 2017, February 7th, 2017, and February 21st, 2017, as written.
And I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I should have mentioned at the beginning, David Burns, our third member of the Board, unfortunately was delayed on a plane that is in the air now but has, was delayed by several hours, so he may be calling into the meeting depending on how long we go, but it's a short agenda, so we, there may not be a very long meeting tonight, but fortunately he is not here because his, his plane got delayed. We have future meeting dates of April 4th, which is a Tuesday evening. We're also scheduled tomorrow to attend the school budget presentation. We posted it for the whole Board. We were invited on Monday and we decided to go ahead and post the notice of a meeting of the Selectmen in case two or more of us are able to attend the meeting tomorrow night. We have to come up with another date in April, but why don't we do that on the 4th, when David is here?
Sure.
And we have some May dates for town meeting. Do we have anyone here tonight for citizen speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes. I'm Laura Kessler and my address is 87 Robin Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to voice my support for keeping the Milton Arts Center in its current location rather than planning to demolish the building and replace it with a proposed East Milton Fire Station. The Milton Arts Center building is an 86-year-old historic structure featured in books which include Milton Architecture by Anthony Samarco and Paul Buchanan and The First 60 Years of the Milton Public Library by Nathaniel Thayer Kidder, the donor of the land upon which the East Milton Branch Library was cited in 1931. Mr. Kidder was a Milton Library trustee in his 27th year of service to the Town of Milton and was also serving as chairman at the time he donated the land at 334 Edgehill Road. The substance and chronology of Kidder's donation for the purpose of an East Milton Library is recited clearly in his book, The First 60 Years of the Milton Public Library, and I have a signed copy, I'm happy to say. Pages 107 and 115 chronicle each warrant, revision, and vote. There was a proposal to acquire additional adjoining property at the time of Kidder's donation, but it was thought to be a luxury which, quote, "If the town sees fit to acquire, would have its chief attraction outside of library uses," end quote. The Warrant Committee then voted that the authority to acquire the adjoining property be not voted. I believe that the donative intent of a loyal volunteer who served the Town of Milton as reflected in the warrants is clear and should be respected. Recent statements by the Firespace Needs Committee and others that the MAC simply switched locations with the fire station are unreasonable and inequitable. The Milton Arts Center is in the sixth year of a 10-year lease with the Town of Milton for which this nonprofit pays $1,500 per month in rent. Assessment records show the MAC has 4,518 square feet of finished space in which it offers art-inspired events in its gallery space, which provides high ceilings, beautiful hardwood floors, and state-of-the-art lighting, all renovated at significant cost and sacrifice to its donors and volunteers. In this space, MAC also offers education, music performances, lectures, workshops, and other events inside and outdoors on .607 acres of land. The East Milton Firehouse, by contrast, has less than one-half the square footage with 1,904 square feet of finished space and .161 acres of land. Currently, the MAC utilizes its dual-purpose gallery space for its music concert series, offering 120 seats in the gallery space, classes in the downstairs space, and some additional funds from art sales in order to support itself. With a reduction in building size this drastic, the MAC event gallery space would be too small to support itself. Class size and scope of class offerings would also be limited. Additionally, the switch recommendation would likely doom the MAC to fail since the switch proposal would require the MAC to shut down and vacate during the demolition and construction of a new fire station and during the renovation of the old fire station to make it safe for use. Add in potential construction delays and a more realistic estimate of the time the MAC would be required to cease operations as apparent. Lost is the goodwill, customer base, and resulting revenue generated from child, teen, and adult art instruction and other classes. The MAC concert series, gallery exhibits, and events including birthday parties, meetings, and other revenue generating events. Business interruption or shutdown of operations for a small business, let alone a small nonprofit organization, is devastating. It takes a long time to build a customer base and a very short time to lose it. I ask that the Board formally find that the Milton Arts Center offers the closest and best use of the property at 334 Edgehill Road in fulfilling the wishes of library supporter and donor Nathaniel T. Kidder, as the MAC continues to enrich art, education, and culture in Milton and that it continue to do so at its current location. I also ask that the Board consider alternative sites, including expanding the current location through the use of eminent domain. A number of public meetings have been held, and I have attended two. Based upon the statements of Chief John Grant and Stephen Moorash of the Firespace Needs Committee, their mission was to explore sites on land currently owned by the Town of Milton. Both stated there are other sites in East Milton that could work within the four-minute Fire Department response time recommended by the National Fire Protection Association 1710. But the Town does not currently own the land. For a project with a proposed budget of $25 million, I believe it would be reasonable and prudent to explore alternative sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight for citizen speak? Thank you very much. Then the next item on our agenda is a discussion with the Milton Arts Center for the Arts in the Windows request, and welcome to Joan Clifford.
Thank you.
Good evening Joan.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Great.
And if you'd like to bring anyone else to the table, please feel free.
Anybody else? We have two Board members here, Kevin Danberg and Marvin Peterson.
Good evening.
Thank you Laura.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you Joan?
Hi. I'm the Executive Director at the Milton Arts Center, and tonight I'm here to ask for permission for town sites, and I did send a letter, but I'm going to give you the children's, we have 15 teams. And I'll just. All right, so this project, Art in the Windows, this is, we're in our fifth year, and it's a public art program for children and teens to create and exhibit public works of art across town for six weeks. Our theme this year is animals, the care, compassion, and respect for all living creatures who share our planet. We have 15 teams of children who will discuss the theme, choose an animal, and they're starting to build their projects now, but not all the teams have come up with their ideas yet. So the three sites that the Town of Milton owns are places that we've asked for before. Two of the teams would like the East Milton Deck again, and actually this is a board from two years ago, East Milton, and this, this site also. So they are looking for sites, but actually there is one different one, and it's on this front page here. They would like to use the chain link fence over where the overpass is. They want to paint fish on wood and secure them with wire to the chain link fence. The other one, we don't have an idea on East Milton Deck yet, they haven't met yet, and the third project that we're asking permission for is the lodge tree, right out here. There was a project there last year, and they are interested in creating a beehive and a swarm of bees on this tree out here. So we'd like to ask permission for that, and I want to just say one more thing, that today is Arts Advocacy Day, which I didn't know, well, I did, but when I, when I found out that I was coming here, it just seemed like a really nice coincidence that this is the day to speak up about how important the arts are for our communities, how much arts education means to our children, and how the arts improve our daily lives. The State Senate President, Stan Rosenberg, is in Washington DC today to advocate for the arts. On his Facebook page, he says, "The arts are not a frivolous thing. The arts put America to work and help bring the ideas and dreams of people to life. A thriving arts environment is essential to our communities, and cutting arts funding would endanger artistic creativity that helps capture our history for the next generation." And he's speaking in response to President Trump calling for the elimination of the NEA, the National Endowment for the Arts, and their budget is 147 million. They gave Massachusetts 2.7 million this past year. They gave the Massachusetts Cultural Council an additional 19, an additional $1,900 and $19,000 to be combined with state money to offer grants. And the reason I'm bringing this up is that our project, Art in the Windows, received a grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council this year for 2,500, and one of our responsibilities in receiving the money is to continue to advocate for, and to tell people where the money is coming from. And we're really pleased to have received this grant. It's a stamp of approval for the quality of the project and community effectiveness, and we'd like to thank all of our partners, the Town of Milton, local businesses who cite the projects and also donate. They sponsor like the Falcone Families, Travis Insurance, and the Milton Junior Women's Club, donate money to have this project happen, and we'd like to thank all of you, and to ask permission to cite the projects, children's projects on the land.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you Joan.
It's a great, it's a great program, and it has gone on for a number of years, and it does add some color and some beauty to the different areas around town where you put the artwork.
It certainly does, and it's got a lot of character to it, really does.
It generates a lot of questions sometimes too.
It does.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah, it is a good thing. Thank you.
So Joan, the only question, well, first of all, let me say that, thank you and the Board for all the, all the great work that you do do. It's, the Milton Arts Center is, is a true asset to the, to the Town, we're glad to have it.
Thanks Joan.
So all these sites are fine. The only thing I don't know is if that fence is actually MassDOT property, it probably is?
I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, so you probably have to get their permission?
So Joan, which is to reach out to me, we can put her to touch people in District 6.
Yeah.
Oh really?
I don't imagine they'll deny it, but.
Oh yeah, but that's, that's good to know.
That's a good point.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We will reach out to you and ask permission.
Okay. So otherwise, I'd like to move to approve the request from Milton Arts Center for its fifth year of Art in the Windows to display children's art projects near the East Milton Deck, Turnus Pond, contingent upon, approved by the Park Department, and the Milton Public Library contingent upon approved by the Library Board of Trustees for May 15th through July 1st, 2017.
And I'll second the motion. And any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all the good work the Arts Center does.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it too. Good evening. Next, we're joined by Department of Public Works Director Joe Lynch for his periodic report.
Good Joe.
Good evening Joe.
How are you doing? These are just an outline format, what I'll speak, speak to.
Good night.
I'll try to be great. Have been in marathon sessions these past few months, it seems, you know, with myriad of issues, least of which is the budget. So, but we've been equally busy on, on a different front, in the same time trying to work with our budgets and try to balance them and work with the Town Administration in doing that. We've been still putting along and working diligently to get our projects ready and, and for productive season and chasing new money and, and so on and so forth. These are some of the highlights. So we have, we put a new water main in School Street this past spring, excuse me, this past fall. That roadway needs to be repaved and will be repaved early this, this, this season. Probably the first road we'll be doing. The new water mains going in this year are going to be on Adams Street from Granite Avenue to the Quincy Town Line, Washington Street and Rockwell. Those are all part of the same project, all within the same general neighborhood. Very real concern with the potential for disruption to traffic and business impacts in the business district, so we've already rolled this project out. We're at 90% complete. We rolled it out to a chamber informational session about two weeks ago. Well received. We were very cognizant to the concerns. We have designed it such a way that in those areas rehabilitation, not full trench digging and night work. We're going to bid it as night work.
Do we coordinate that with the city of Quincy too? In terms of just traffic flow and?
We'll do, yes we will. We'll do better than they did when they took on their project and didn't coordinate with us. We're doing a much better job than doing that.
Okay.
We expect to make that award in, in June. Construction will start this summer, go right through the summer into the fall. So work, we have two force mains, three force mains in two separate areas. Tom's aware of this through the Capitol Committee. One on Granite Avenue, which replaces all of that force main. It goes from, there's a low creek down by the golf course. If you're on Granite Avenue, you might know where that is, and it runs up the hill halfway between Hope and Squanton. It's in the gutter, it's in the state highway area. That project is, let me continue with the next area. It's two on Randolph Avenue. One is what we call Upper Randolph Pump Station. It's a very short force main from, from the A Thomas area, opposite side of the street, and it runs up to Eagle Road where it goes back to Gravity, and then the Lower Randolph goes from just north of the gate to Wallaston Country Club and runs all the way up to Reed Street. We'll be replacing 85% of that force main. And the reason why we're replacing just a portion of that one is when the state highway project came through about 10 years ago, the portion that was underneath that roadway, they replaced it at that time, so that's relatively new. We'll be replacing the balance of it that's up the sidewalk area. All that investigation work is done, the analysis and designs are complete. We're 90% completed with the coordination with MassDOT. We're doing a little force trading with regards to pavement restoration standards, which can be very robust in DOT's eyes. What we have done is exchange plowing of the sidewalk on Randolph Avenue, which we've taken on willingly for them to relax the paving standards on Granite Avenue. A big documents are being wrapped up as we speak. That'll go up to bid late June, early July, and that construction will start this summer. One year, one year project. II, that's our Influent Infiltration Program. We're in year 13 of our exploration, basically looking at next year's program, and we'll determine what areas of value are effective, which areas we'll then focus our designs on, which will become next year's construction. At the same time, we'll be embarking upon year 12 construction work. Those bid documents are just about finished. We're going to bid those in mid-June, just the time of year to bid that type of work. It will, would in July, and notice to proceed, they'll do that work right through. Most of that's trenchless work, not open trench digging, so that work can, is usually not very intrusive and can go right through the, the entire summer and fall months.
Right. The only thing I want to highlight, Joe, is that those force mains are more or less one-time projects, they're not recurring annual projects.
Absolutely, yeah.
So one of the things that we kind of had from the Capitol Committee was normally we spend about 750,000 out of the budget on INI, and that's basically going to come, it's still going to happen, it's just probably not, very little of it is going to come out of the operating, the sewer budget.
So the Capitol Committee last Thursday, there was a charge given back to the Town Accountant, the Town Engineer, and myself to go through and, and find out how we could coordinate.
Get that.
That has happened.
Okay.
And we are confident that those projects are going to move forward without delay this year.
Yeah.
And that'll be reported back.
So if you can knock 700,000 out, that, that pays for a good chunk of the 1.2 million, you know, without impacting the rates too too much.
That's correct.
Correct.
And it is, they are one-time projects. We have nine pump stations, every pump station has a force main. These are three that are, have a leak history that are pretty severe, so we're going to be tightening them up. The others, Knockwood, are not any particularly prone to leak history, however, we have forecasted them on the capital plan for, for future years, it's, you know, something to not lose sight of.
Right.
Highway work, this is the roadway work. This is what we completed last December. Most people realize that this, it gave us an update because it, when I last came here in November, the work was still ongoing, but we have completed all those streets that we had set out to complete last, last, last fall. Yet to be completed though, that were left over from last year is School Street, which is the full length, and then Canton Avenue from the Glover School up to School Street itself. The Blue Hill Parkway Grant Project, it's a 3.2 million for like, you know, just for rounding purposes, 3.2 million dollar project. That's substantially complete. The lodge mast arms, the big heavy arms and the big bridges between those arms that carry the signs, overhead signs, those are long lead items. They were not ready in the, in this fall. Those are yet to be installed, as is the final landscaping. That will all be completed this spring. That project will come to.
So all the traffic signals and all the traffic signs will be overhead?
All the signals have been functioning now for some time, and boy oh boy, it's one, it's working great. It did what, everything we had hoped it would do. It's really taken a lot of the, the safety concerns of cross-traffic, multi-lane cross-traffic that was happening at some of those intersections and did away with it. So it's working great.
And the signage now will also be?
The signage will be overhead. That's what's yet to be done. So what's out there is still the old signage.
That's, that's a great thing when you see it, and other states do it, you know, almost every place, but I mean, it's, it's so aggravating when you see a left-hand turn only lane in the middle of the road when there's somebody over it and, you know, you wind up in that.
You just, you just don't know it's there, right?
You don't know it's there, yeah.
Right. All, all of that stuff will be lane-appropriate and overhead.
Yeah, it just helps the flow of traffic just so much.
So they're very happy to report, to give, to give them in justice. Senator Joyce worked on getting that money for us for five years in real, real hard push, and in the end it took a lot of effort of coordinating with the Town and DCR and MassDOT and to some extent even the City of Boston Transportation Department to pull this off. So it's, it's a great victory.
Joan, while you're on, how is, even though it's not our project, could you talk just a couple of seconds about the Granite Ave? I know they're going to have their, what, 25% meeting?
Next Thursday, at the library.
28th, 28th, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that should be, when that project's finished, it seems like it should really help the flow of traffic down, on Granite Ave and Squanton Street.
That's correct. That's correct. Again, that's not our project, that's a state project, but you know, we're, we're a stakeholder because it's our community, so, yeah, we are, we are hosting the location for the public area, but it's a MassDOT public area. Stormwater, simply put, we remain in compliance with the, the old permit and the new permit through the process of transitioning between the two. The new permit came out of July, as we all know. We started street sweeping a couple of weeks ago, you know, as weather permits. Every ounce of material we get off the road, even though we may have another storm, is just, you know, material we don't have to pick up later, so it's good to get a jump on that. Similarly, we started catch basin cleaning pretty early this year because we didn't have any real deep freezes where we couldn't get into basins, so we started some of those in, in a light way in early February, and we're going to ramp up to full production in April. But we're averaging, one week a week, 7 or 8 basins a day, even this time of year, that's pretty good, pretty darn good actually. So we're going to, if we have the weather hold out the way it will, we'll make really, really, really good progress in attaining the NIPD's goals that are set in the permit. These are the drainage systems, portions of systems that will be replaced this season as part of our, our construction work for, for surface drains. Churchill's Road, that's from Adams to Brook, so that's the Milton Hill area piece of it. That'll be a full replacement. Bradley's Road, full length of that, that'll be a full replacement. Thatcher Street, Engine Road, which ostensibly is just outside of the Town Hall campus exit onto, onto Thatcher. From there up to Canton Avenue, we have an old corrugated pipe that has got cancer. It's corroded and it keeps collapsing, so that's, that's a problem, and it's a main drain that's being replaced. And then Adams Street, as part of that other water main project, we're also replacing the drain from East Milton Square all the way to the Quincy Line. So that's, that's all going to be one project, but various aspects and paid from various pockets. We, we applied for, two years ago, a grant to study the possibility of getting into a CZM Coastal Zone Management Grant Program for construction. We applied based on the strength of that initial grant, we've got enough feasibility to apply for a grant. We landed that $18,000 grant this past, early, early winter, I guess it was December when we got it. What that's going to do is allow us to put various water quality, BMPs, Best Management Practices in place in Brook Road. It's centered down by that Veterans Memorial Area, down by the cemetery in, in the grass area. It's going to also allow us to put some BMPs, basically it's pollution attenuation devices behind the police station where there's a measured problem, and also down behind the Cunningham School, which was what tipped the grant in our favor because behind the Cunningham School, the way we studied the feasibility was not just simply build something, but build a curriculum out of it to show the kids can study and understand the value of water quality, and it's going to be an interpretive structure with some of those older kids in, in school can actually learn about stormwater.
Great.
The school department embraced that fully, and that tipped the scales in our favor of getting the grant. That's really, really nice to report. 319 grant we also applied for, that's, that's a non-point source grant, that's MassDEP issues that one. We got $88,000 reward, we got that one this past December. We have $60,000 as a local match, but what that's allowing us to do is a bunch of water quality improvements and stormwater collection points on both sides of Wendell Park, right along the Brook that feeds the area from Wendell Park and feeds directly into Pine Tree Brook. So that one is, is moving forward, the bids are, that one is going to be going to construction. The CZM one is still in design development. It takes us only through bid documents, so that one, there'll be yet another ground to grant, grants to actually build it. We also participate in the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. We received $9,500 grant for the purpose of doing various good environmentally sustainable things in town. Later on the agenda, meaning next on the agenda, will be the Town adopting a policy which speaks to the value of having a policy such as this allows us to continue to get this grant in the future. Stormwater utility fees, we all know.
Joan, excuse me for one minute. Why don't you give your summary, and then, as you know, we've been hearing from some residents about the fees, so we, I've got some questions.
And at the end?
Yes, do, let's do the questions at the end, and why don't you cover the, you know, the information you want to present about it, and then let's go through some questions about the, especially about Tier Four and the residential structure.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
So make sure I'm clear. Do you want me to give you, give you the outlines of the stormwater utility fee?
Yes, please.
And now just pause and see?
And I think if you could even expand upon it a little bit and just refresh some people's minds about what the fee is covering, because there have been some questions that have come up about what the services are that the fee is covering, and there's, there's still some confusion about that.
Okay, sure.
You, in some extent, you covered it already by talking about the different things you're doing, but I think if you could summarize it, it would be helpful to some people.
And the one thing too is if, if people do want to visit the, the Town's website and look at DBW, there's, there's a plethora of information about stormwater out there.
There's an entire section and two subsections. It's, it's, so if people who have internet access, you know, townmilton.org, go to the departments, go to Public Works, stormwater, and there's a whole listing of it that they can read through in sequence, which is very informative, so that's a great way. Those who don't have the internet, please pay attention. So we went through the process with two, two town meetings. Special Town Meeting last February, we went ultimately to a full Town Meeting in the spring where the Stormwater Enterprise was created and the Stormwater Budget was created at the annual Town Meeting. So two very well-publicized and very well-vetted public forums for, for which this was started out. Through, after that process in place, we also went through a very arduous process of conducting informational hearings and then public hearings with regards to the understanding of, so what does this utility look like? What is it we're paying for? What is it we have to do, and how is it, might we consider to pay, you know, to fund it? And, and looked at with support from the Ponder of Water Source Association and the Metropolitan Area. Association and the Mass, um, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, looked at various ways that town, this has been done across the country. Uh, through that process, we, we narrowed down a very broad scope into something that seemed to be palatable to Milton and then focused on bringing that to, to completion, which was done at the end of this past summer by virtue of the town board selectmen adopting the regulations to go along with the bylaw. Um, with that in place, we then embarked upon, you know, the, the hard work of coordinating with simply our billing software coordinator and getting all the data to, to make, to fit a bill to issue to people. And that was all done throughout the fall months and was completed with the first bills going out in February 17th. We issued, uh, if it's any, of any interest, 8,338 stormwater bills to all entities, uh, single-family, multifamily, various classes of industrial, commercial properties, condominiums, and most importantly, for the first time, we've capturing some sort of revenue source from not-for-profits. The, the university, the, uh, the public, the private schools, the, including municipal departments, you know. I paid a $9,000, you know, $9,800 bill for the various DPW properties. So, um, we, we hit all of the property owners in town, including DCR. So, that amount of billing was $715,624 and I was ill-prepared to hear the question of what we might pay for. So, I don't have the budget numbers rock solid in my head, but it's around a $713,000 annual budget that was approved at town meeting. So, for all intent and purpose, it, it does in fact balance, balance out revenue supporting the, the function. Now, on those functions, Katie, that's where you want me to tell us what it is we do?
I think if you could briefly just cover what the fee covers, what services that your department provides that are covered by this fee.
Sure. So, what, so the NPT's permit requires a broad umbrella of things that you must do, but those things that we have been doing and will continue to do are simply, we collect our yard waste. It requires you to have yard waste, organic recycling program, we have that. So, what was previously yard waste, solid waste is now stormwater and, and has been for a couple of years. We have to sweep streets. We have to clean catch basins. We have to, um, conduct a household hazardous waste program, which we do a collection once a year. So, all of those things that we have been doing are now all part of the stormwater operation. What it is we have to do is we continue to have to make stormwater improvements to our systems, like those projects we spoke of earlier, where we have deteriorated systems. We have to continue to go out and measure flows in these pipes, measure not the volume, but the quality of the water. Dry weather with the water coming out, it's going to be certain characteristics to it chemically, and wet weather it may be different. And by analysis and engineering technique, you're able to determine and maybe pinpoint the type of pollution and where it's coming from. Hence, those three projects that we identified, one at the Cunningham School area, one at the police station, and one down at Brook and Center. We know those pollution plume areas because of the studies that we've had to done, had to do. Because we have those studies, because NPT's requires, because it gives us the ability to have the data, we can, we chase money on grants. We've been successful in doing that too. So, I guess what I report out is, you know, what otherwise would have been a $100,000 or more project that the town would have been solely responsible for, but because of NPT's and because of where we are, we're able to leverage far greater money through grants in only a small portion of those projects being borne by the ratepayers. So, we're trying to do those responsible things to chase outside money, you know, when, when that's available. Uh, but it also requires us to do an awful lot of analysis. We have lots of outfalls in town, meaning it's where the water discharges from a pipe into the waters of the United States, where it can be a brook, it can be a marsh, it can be a river, it can be at the estuary down at the Ponce reservation. Uh, but we have to measure all of those outfalls multiple times a year and depending what you find dictates that how far upstream you need to go and how many more additional samples. And those are very costly and very cumbersome to undertake.
And we, we don't do those ourselves. We use a, um, a contractor.
It has to be a certified laboratory, right?
Yeah.
Right. It's, it's almost forensic science. In fact, in some instances, it is forensic science to determine exactly the source. If, if you've got a real chemical problem, you know, you're there trying to, you know, trace down exactly the elements and who uses it and what concentrations. Um, so, and it also requires us to, to, you know, correlate those types of findings to our sewer infiltration program, because if you have infiltration in high groundwater periods and low groundwater periods, some of that sewage could leach back out and could also be creating bacteria and nutrient loads. So, that's where the, you know, the, the big, big item is. Um, we also have, over the, over the years, generated a, a massive pile of street sweepings and catch basin cleanings that's been stockpiled out of the yards. Uh, we have also been working diligently to, to remove that pile. At this point, we've removed probably two-thirds of the pile, but it's, it's about a $400,000 undertaking thus far and it's likely to be another couple hundred thousand dollars. So, in essence, when you look at all of those construction programs, the analytical programs, the street sweeping, the yard waste, all those things we're doing, they're just $700,000. And that's what the budget carries. Uh, selectmen had a choice. One of those choices were, well, do you want to keep stormwater where it is or do you want to enterprise it? I thought it was, I thought, and you folks agreed, it was prudent to keep it enterprise because of the accountability of it. Every penny generated from stormwater stays strictly with stormwater. It can't be used to fund a policeman, a fire truck. It can't be used to, to paint, paint lines on the roadways. It's, it's dedicated for the specific purpose it was intended. So, you know, the accountability piece of it is pretty good. That's why the revenues we raise try to almost exactly hit the forecast of the budget.
Right. And the other thing I clearly did was, uh, while it was inside the operating budget, uh, it was the responsibility of the, the real estate taxpayers of the town, 94 of which, percent of which is the residential, um, homeowners in the town, um, majority of those being single-family homeowners. Uh, this allowed us to, uh, when you consider what was, well, I shouldn't say pushed off, but for everybody to share in the burden equitably, um, so that nonprofits would share in it, um, the, uh, you know, some of the nonprofit housing programs in the town, the schools and, you know, the, the churches, the, um, and, and the business communities to the extent that they have larger impervious areas than, than they do necessarily real estate assessments.
As a, as a percentage of their tax base, they, they may have much more of an impact due to impervious area.
Correct.
That's right.
So, I think it wound up being close to 30%.
That we, we captured for the first time.
Yeah.
Um, I think what's, what's important to point out, if, if I can remember where my thought was just going to go with, with Tom was talking, was, um, it's on, it's on the value of the things that we, we're doing with, with stormwater.
Yeah, well, you, you start talking about the, um, basically how, um, it's tran, the transparency of it, that, you know, you can see what's been spent. It's going to only be spent for that. And so, that's what you.
I know exactly where I was going to go. I'm sorry. I'm probably, I'm sorry for the lapse of memory here. Um, growing pains, this was the first time that we've certainly done it. It's only the seventh time it's been done in Massachusetts. And this, this is a burgeoning approach that's being embraced by towns all over. We're, we're getting calls on a very frequent basis of, you know, what do you do? How do you do it? And, you know, and, and at this point, the people I've talked to, I know of at least a dozen other communities who have this on their docket for this year, and it's all, it's ever-growing. I, I say that in the context that it's important to point out that when I said growing pains is that there's nothing perfect. We, there's all pros and cons with every single alternative that was out there. Just like with water and sewer every single year, we have the ability to come back and rethink where we are, where we've been and where we might go. Several years ago, maybe four or five years ago, a, a group of constituents came in with what they thought to be an issue with the way multifamily buildings were being built for their water. We listened to it. We studied it. Uh, as part of the rate-setting process two years ago, the selectman said, "Yeah, we see that," and made an adjustment to the rate-setting method. So, I don't think anybody ought to think at home that this, what was put in place for the first year is it forevermore. It, it's subject to review every single year. And I think it's an important point that people take away with it.
That is an important point, Joe. And just to that point, so, I think it would be helpful to people who are watching if we just try to answer a few questions that have come in. So, one resident who moved from a smaller lot to a larger lot contacted us and said, "Shouldn't the calculation be based on not just the square footage of their impervious property space, but the percentage of the impervious, impervious property on the lot?" And, and her example was by being on the smaller lot, she had, she had more impervious space compared to the total size of the lot. And now, but living on a much bigger property, there's a lot of grass, there's a lot of green space, and if it's, if the calculation were a percentage of the impervious property to the size of the lot, would that make sense? Could you just explain why that method wasn't chosen?
Um, I think it was explored. I, I think it came right down to the ability to quantify that on a, on a recurring basis, year to year, as, as properties get subdivided and as they get divvied up or as people expand, um, their properties with additions in driveways and swimming pools and other things. And it just became, um, onerous to be able to continue to track. Uh, I, I think it was considered and I think, you know, was ruled out as a possibility within the first year and, and I'm not suggesting that it, it couldn't be something we trend towards.
Okay. And I know you've spoken about Mr. Jerry Burke, Center Street, has given us a number of questions. Um, we've responded to a couple of them, but I, I think it would be helpful to, for others who may be into, his questions are all really specific to Tier Four, which is the highest rate for the single-family residential homes. So, some of his questions are, "Why aren't all houses paying an amount based on the actual square footage of the impervious area?" And I believe he's referencing the $1.56 per 100 square foot. And then he asked, "Why can't the rate in Tier Four be corrected now?" I think, we, we may say adjusted now. I'm not sure that it's necessarily a correction because the, the rates that were set were based on a lot of public discussion with a lot of input after a lot of hearings. But, could you speak to that? Why, why aren't all the houses paying an amount based on the square, the actual square footage rather than the range that makes up the tiers?
So, I'm sure you folks will remember, uh, for Mr. Burke and those at home who, who may not, not understand this, um, several, of all the several methods we explored in, in the public hearing process was to a flat fee, period, to a square foot basis precisely, and then the so-called hybrid. You remember when
Mm-hmm.
the hybrid took those two together and then what the debate then focused on was, from the selectman's perspective, is a way to share equity or provide equity. Let's look at classes of housing, single-family home and everything else. And then even with a single-family home, the hybrid didn't work because you had such a disparity of smaller property cover types versus larger property cover types. And there was just a, basically the smaller folks were subsidizing the higher folks. So, then it was decided, well, let's break this into tiers. Let's give it ranges. And the methodology that was used, the statistical methodology was 25, 25th percentiles. So, the single-family residential class of which there, I'm not going to give you the right number, so I won't even quote a number. Um, but out of all those single-family houses, 25% of them were Tier One, 25 were Tier Two, 25 were Tier Three, and 25 were Tier Four. And within each of those 25 cuts of, of that population, they then took the range of square footages in that, within that tier and picked
Midpoint.
the median and calculated everything, the hybrid fixed fee at Tier One, similarly ticked Tier Two, similarly Tier Three. And at Tier Four, the situation, even though this was pretty well-balanced because of the vast majority of the population is in that smaller property class, impervious type, up to the, the larger type, but the top tier, the disparity is so great, from like 4,200, 4,300 square feet all the way up to 50,000 square foot on a single property in this town, and several in the 30,000 square feet, you know, hockey rinks and tennis courts and swimming pools and huge, huge houses and long, long driveways. So, because of that disparity, the, the median at Tier Four holds in at a very large level where all of those rates were calculated. And that's, that's what happened. Statistically, it makes sense. Financially, it's something that we probably want to look at in the future.
All right, and
The second part of that question is, "Why can't we do it now?"
That's right.
Did you have a call, question? Are you reminding me of the next part of it?
Yeah, that, that is the second part, but then what you just said is related to another question. So, let's cover that now and then.
Can I just interject?
Sure, absolutely.
Because, uh, back to that question, uh, the, the other reason that we, we didn't do it based upon individual impervious for each of the 9,000 or so homes in, in Milton was to try and keep the administration, and we didn't want to add administrative cost to the stormwater. Uh, it, it just seemed to be counterproductive.
I don't want to use hy, I don't want to use hyperbole, but Tom, you're absolutely right. We can be far, far, far more precise. I could spend $400,000 a year to add on top of the $700 we're already spending.
Trying to administer, yeah.
What are we gaining, spending administrative time?
Well, to that point, I do remember we had a discussion about taking photographs, but we, we'd have to do it every year in order to keep up with anyone adding a patio to their property or some other, in addition to the house. So, we did talk about maybe, um, photographs that would show the size or what the impervious space is on each lot, but
And how often they
it would be out of date fairly soon with all the changes that are going on. You know how busy our building department is, so.
Right.
That would become very static.
So, the second part of Mr., as you were conveying, Mr. Burke's question was, "So, why can't we change it now?" Well, as we spoke of earlier, those, those items that we do that are included within the budget, that $713,000 round number generated $715,600 in bills. If we were to go in and change some, we'd be like changing the water rate right now, you, the result would be an impact to the revenue you collect. So, if we were to just, I think Mr. Burke's question is specific to, to Tier Four. If we were to go in and take just Tier Four and apply it on exactly the square footage basis only, it would result in us missing our revenue need by about $55,000 in this year.
Okay. Related to what you had been saying a couple of minutes ago, his next point is that the tiers should come as close as possible to the same rate for commercial and nonprofits, which is the $1.56 per 100 square feet. So, he's asking, "Why are there just four tiers? What is preventing us from creating additional tiers if necessary to come as close as possible to the $1.56 per 100 square foot and doing it now?" I think you've answered the second part of it. But, the additional tiers, could you speak to that? Is that something we could look at?
I'm a number cruncher. Maybe not as much as
As is Tom.
But I'm a number cruncher and I, and I've actually looked at those and, and I, I have, you know, as we consider the rates for next year, I have a couple of ideas that I think could result in, and still, single-family classes, I believe we can create six single-family classes, which result in a Tier One, Two, Three, and what was Four, now, uh, Four and Five, and then the highest class, would, which would
Right.
take that bandwidth and, and narrow it down much more focused.
Right. And, and that's what it is, the narrowing of the bandwidth in that, in that top tier, because it's a huge, huge range. Uh, but, you know, next year, when you're resetting rates, you can reset rates to, to accommodate the tiers that you have.
I believe that's a possibility. I mean, I certainly have some ideas. I, I'm certainly going to share them. Some people have already seen those. Um, I, I believe that if, as we go into the rate-setting methodology next year, I, I think those are very much going to be on the table.
Right. So, you know, to, to raise the amount of revenue you need, it may not be $1.56. It may be $1.58, you know. I mean, but, but that's something we can't really do now. We've already set that rate. We've already billed those, those people. To try and pull it back now would be just impossible.
So, we, we have the revenue issue for real, but we also have the logistics. We have those folks in Tier Four who've received the bill and has legitimately paid it. You know, how do you refund that money? You know, it's issuing of new bills and the confu, it, it, I, I hate to say, "It's time to move on," but the decision was made. We, we, we need to recognize that it's something we probably ought to look at and will look at in Tier Four and all the tiers, like we will every single year, when we consider water rates, sewer rates, and now stormwater utility rates. Um, but I, I'd be real reluctant to recommend anything in this, at this time.
Just a couple more, and, and I think you've already touched a little bit on this one, but he's also asking, "Would it be possible to lower the rate for residents with 10,000 square feet of impervious area to come closer to a more equitable rate?" The difference can be made up by a small increase in the rate assessed on commercial and nonprofit properties, which he's arguing that these categories are the biggest cause of the polluted runoffs with the traffic, congestion, construction. Um, and in the case of private schools and the college, for example, many of the cars and trucks are coming from out of town. Um, and these, these categories, commercial and nonprofit are the biggest cause of polluted runoff due to the large amount of automobile and truck traffic associated with those properties. So, that, that's, um,
So, he's raising points of think that they may be similar to what I had just suggested as we look at next year.
Yes.
They may be different, but I think the selectmen might want to look at various alternatives as they look at next year's rate. Uh, with regards to subscribing to sources of pollution, the greatest source of pollution is fertilizer and pet waste in our town. So, I disagree with the source.
Okay, that's interesting. Do we look at how many cars are registered to each of the residences? I, I didn't think we did, but we, okay.
No, you did not.
Um, and then the only other question was whether, in, in setting the rate, whether the town treasurer was involved or whether anyone with any expertise in finance, I would say Tom Hurley, fee assessment or residential property tax assessment was involved. And I responded to that one, indicating that we had a lot of assistance from the MAPC. And I responded to that one, indicating that we had a lot of assistance from the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that we're a member of and serves as a regional planning agency, and also NEPRA, the Metropolitan Water Shutter Authority. They gave us a lot of help and a lot of advice based on experiences in other communities. But is there anything beyond that that you would add to that, Joe?
So, the financial expertise, our own town accountant, because Tom being an accountant and a member of the Board of Selectmen and an active participant in the process from day one, dare say the genesis of it. Thank you. And even when we got to the enterprise discussions, you know, soliciting the town's vendor for enterprise expertise, Mark Abrams, is setting that up. So, yeah, we took advantage of all of those things.
And I analogize it too, to when we set the water and sewer rates, that's not something that we involve the Board of Assessors, the town treasurer, in, because that's really not their area of expertise. That's where we have an outside consultant who comes in and helps the DPW, and then often comes into the presentations on the rate setting. So, the same thing, in this case, it wasn't the, it was NEPRA and the MAPC and Mark Abrams who provided some additional assistance and guidance to the town.
And with the difference of a discussion such as this, where it rolled out for the very first time, of course, we had legal assistance, you know, town council and approval of the bylaw through the Attorney General's office. So, we didn't go into this blindly.
That's right. That's a good point. Okay, I think we've answered those questions.
One question, more just a reminder, I guess, Joe, we had said a few months ago that we were going to study what other towns, what other communities and other parts of the country maybe are doing in terms of a credit program, and how to make an equitable credit program. Have there been any headway in that?
I have not. I apologize, I have not. I have struck up conversations with colleagues of mine, mostly in the context of them looking to explore it on their own, and talked about the importance of credits in an esoteric, abstract sort of way, that it, programs like these are about water quality and improving water quality, and one of the things that we ought to always consider is to make it advantageous, give some reward for people who are doing that. So, you know, that philosophically is a premise, and I think we all recognize that even during the hearing process, but we also recognize it's something we needed to look at, you know, for a future year.
Right. And in the long run, that probably does make a difference. In the short run, most of this stuff is fixed cost. That, you know, that's the unfortunate part.
What it does is, it doesn't change your operating cost of the utility. What it's going to do is shift that cost burden onto other classes of folks who may don't have the ability to put a BMP, you know, Best Management Practice device in.
Right, right. The costs don't go away in the short run. They may in the long run, if enough people, you know...
You know, one thing I've contemplated, you know, I've actually attended seminars and I've gone to a lot of conservation conferences, and I've thought about this, is that, and it's not static, just because you have a BMP doesn't mean it works, doesn't mean it works to its optimum condition, doesn't mean that what you put in year one and that you've never maintained again continues to work, you know, after five years, it's going to continue to deteriorate. And so, I think there should be some opportunity to apply for a specific credit that has a cap and a ceiling. And when the cap of the town budgets in a given year is exhausted, then that's it for the credits in a given year. That's what I'm thinking, because otherwise, I don't think you could possibly go out there and measure performance year after year after year to determine that the credit's still valid.
Right. We just want them to empower to do it, yeah?
Joe, I think I overlooked one question, which was whether the residential tier rates were designed to lower the rate for commercial and nonprofits. And that was not the case, it was just the opposite.
Just the opposite.
In fact, we went at one point from two tiers that you were proposing initially to four tiers to try to make it a little bit more equitable for the residential property owners. And the idea here was, as you said, Tom, to bring in some of the nonprofits for the first time to make them subject of this payment. So...
I'm not remembering the number for this table, but when you say went from here to there, we're not talking in the course of a discussion or meeting over five public, several public hearings, where the various alternatives were brought up at the table from various citizens and other public officials, where they were brought back and studied and then reported and then further debated at future meetings. So, it was pretty well-thought-out.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions. I think that's probably helpful to people who are watching who may have questions.
Well, that's the stormwater section. Solid Waste, just a reminder, this may be news to Mike, but the Board of Selectmen convened once about seven years ago, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, it was an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen, where they sat and looked at various alternatives regarding solid waste. It was reconvened, that resulted in a one-year extension with Waste Management, was reconvened to determine whether we wanted to extend that contract yet again, or did we want to go up to an IRFP? We decided to go up to an IRFP, and then that committee sat in place for better part of a full year as that process moved forward, and ultimately resulted in a contract being put in place. I say all of that because we just started in this past, Joe, I won the third year of a five-year project, a program, you know, contract. This is the time when the Board of Selectmen ought to be considering reconvening the committee. Mike and I probably need to talk about that in more detail. He'll present to the Board of when that is appropriate, but, because I know Mike's got a lot of experience, a lot of ideas on solid waste. But recognize the time, these things take a long time, and extension even takes some considerable time to get in place. You want to have it in place, certainly, before you're into that last year. If we decide to not extend the contract, then we got to look at putting an IRFP on the street, and it takes a good amount of time to get that out there and get it proper. So, that's something that's going to happen.
I think that's a good idea, if you have a conversation with the town administrator, given that we now have a town administrator who's got a lot of experience in this area.
Absolutely.
See what your recommendations are.
Sure. If you remember, we were pursuing some trade tree money, the Copelands gave us some money. We planted those 50 trees this past November and December, they're all in. We also had other various Copeland funds that were getting repurposed. They had provided us funds for a lot of construction equipment, mostly snowfighting equipment. That resulted in about $30,000 surplus in providing my annual report to the Copelands of how we spent the money. I was so bold to ask them, would you consider repurposing the balance? And they said, sure. So, we have $30,000, which is going to allow us to get about another, between 60 and 70 trees planted. We're working with the Public Shade Tree Committee, we actually had a meeting yesterday afternoon. They're working on the update to their inventory. That's going to result in high priority, medium priority sites, where we can do away with a lottery and just have a real methodical way to get these trees planted this coming fall.
That's great news.
It's real good. And thank God for the Copelands. That's not to say that if various parts of the contingent, non-contingent, and capital budgets move forward, this money's for some tree planting in each levels of those.
I just noticed, Joe, the repurposing is $30,003.91. That's a pretty specific number. How many trees did you get with the $3.91?
That's the accounting number that went into the Copelands because they needed it. They said, sure, spend every penny.
Well, thank you to the Copeland Foundation for allowing that repurposing, that's great news. Joe, you might want to remind people that another option, if someone doesn't, because there's so many people looking for shade trees on their property, it's also possible for a homeowner to go out and purchase one, and then the town would pay to plant it.
That's correct. www.townofmilton.org/dpwsheathrees, there's a whole section in there on selection of trees and the process you need to follow. Come consult with us, we'll look at your utilities, your overhead wires, your underground pipes, we'll work with you to find a location, because the last thing we want someone to do is go to the local nursery, buy the wrong tree for the wrong location that can't be planted, and then we have to undo it all. So, it's laid right out there, it's terrific. We, the bottom line is, if they purchase the tree, and it's approved, and the location's good, and they purchase it, it's one-stop shop, and they do it, we'll pick it up, we'll plant it, and depending on its location, we'll care for it. I say depending on location. Some folks, I advocate, and some folks elect to plant the tree as long as the canopy goes over the street, to plant it on their own property, because it's more successful without the pressures of, you know, road edge, you know, traffic and whatnot. And if they do that, you know, we certainly still plant it on their property, we just have a right-of-entry agreement, we ask them to sign. Yeah, that's great, thank you for getting that out there. The optimum time, they can purchase the trees when they see fit, but the optimum time to purchase is in the spring, let them stay, they tag them, let them stay on the lot, and we'll plant them in the fall. You never want to shop for a tree with the leftover stock. Don't go there Labor Day weekend or in the September. All you're doing is buying the dead stock that wasn't previously bought and tagged.
That's good to know.
Designated space, that's the completion of, we haven't named it yet, and we haven't got a real definitive name for it, other than we call it the crew facility. What it really is, is a lunchroom training facility and locker room with an office space for the operations director. That project's complete at long last, we're substantially complete, we're just working on punch list items. That'll be fully closed out come May, but we've already run one snow operation out of it, and the crew has pretty much been in it full-time for two full weeks. That's a wonderful facility, I urge you all to come down and take a look at it. It'll be open for the open house. Just some statistics on service requests. Since January, we've, January 1, we've received 154 requests for services, that's 62 service requests per month. For all of calendar year '16, we were 1,208, that was a rate of 100 service requests per month. The same period, service requests are just for services and information, work orders are actual work that has to be performed. In periods since January 1, we got 200, we entered in 285 work orders, that's 114 work orders per month. And then, all of 2016, there were 2,201 work orders, that was a rate of 183 work orders per month. So, we've lost a little bit of ground in our closure rate, minuscule, from 90% to 89%. But the reality of those that are open are very large requests. Please pave my street. It's a request, it's still out there, but obviously you can't close it, it's a, you know, the water pressure in my neighborhood is terrible. It still adds up as a service cost, so those don't get closed out. So, statistically, we haven't lost any ground, we haven't gained any ground on our closure rates, so I think we're holding steady on the workload.
And on that point, for paving, when you get a request to pave a street, you've got a list that goes on for a number of years as to what streets are the priorities over the next so many years.
That's right. So, we have, so we have four levels, and I don't want to complicate people with details, but simply put, is every roadway segment has a condition index, you know, block to block, you know, Canton Avenue, not the whole length, but block by block by block by block, we have a pavement condition index, and we know the width and the type of roadway work that needs to be done. And from there, you can analyze life cycle, and you can analyze cost. So, every roadway segment has an index, has a cost, and has a target. To say that my road is the worst in town, it may not be true. Analytically, we know which ones are. Tool number one. Tool number two is, we have an II program where we know we have deficient sewers and force mates. Now, those are things that need to be done. We tried to take the worst sewer and the worst roadway and try to put them together. Similarly, we have a 10-year water master plan, where the water deficiencies are identified, quantitative, quantitatively identified, and we take those worst water supply areas, thank God water quality's good, it's typically fire flows that are at issue. We take those fire flow issues with the worst sewer versus the roadways and meld them together. And then, once we got our candidates of the worst roads, we sit down with the gas company to make sure that they're not ripping up our road as soon as we've paved it. So, that's the way we attack it, you know. So, the answer is, my road's the worst, but, I hate to say it, if it doesn't see high traffic and it doesn't also have really bad water main, it may, your roadway may be a little bit worse than one that's a candidate, but those other things skew it in favor of getting pushed up a year, because they have to be done together.
Joe, just a couple of other things. One, unbilled sewer services, where are we at on those? Is that project complete?
Project's complete. I don't have the number of what we actually captured, but it was in the order of 50, 50-plus services, customers that we identified who were not previously getting billed. They're all in a payment program, and as far as I know, they're all current with the repayment program. Those properties that were in a repayment program that have sold, that's part of their closing costs is to pay off the balance.
Right. And as far as we know, that was the extent of the problem.
It was.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, Tom...
It's one of those things, when you start out, you don't know, you don't know how many there are. You find one, you scratch your head, you find two, you say, oh, boy. You find 10, you say, better look at this.
And then, Tom, you had asked a couple of, you need to go for an update on complete streets, and Joe, I know we didn't pass that along to you, but you may not be prepared to speak to it tonight, but is there anything you can say about that?
I don't have the paperwork with me tonight, but just like the policy for the environmental recycle initiative, we also have a complete streets policy that we've developed...
That has to be adopted.
...to be adopted. So, I think that's actually slated to come up for your next selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, the one thing I wanted to, Joe, you know, when we're talking about a 25 mile hour speed limit, and I've been saying for a long time, you can set the speed limit anything you want, people are going to drive the rate that they feel comfortable with on the road. You know, if the road's wide and straight, you know, no matter what you put the speed limit at, people are going to drive at a comfortable speed. But to the extent that complete streets would have a tendency, from what I've heard, to...
Context sensitivity, they call it.
Yeah.
When you take the transportation element, multimodal transportation element, pedestrian functions, bicycle functions, handicapped accessibility, as well as the vehicular movements, and you put them in the context of where I, are you in a country roadway, or are you in a business district? Are you in a business district with parking on the side? All of those things get thought of in a complete fashion. So, this initiative that MASTDOT has ruled out, it looks at it in that context.
It could have a traffic calming effect.
Among other things, sure. Oh, yeah. It's one of the things we ought to be looking at as part of, and that's what the policy says in so many words, among other things. So, it's a great program. So, I think John's got something that's coming up to you folks at the next meeting. John Thompson.
Good.
Joe, back to on the stormwater for a moment, could you try to put together some of that comparative data? If not on the issue of credits, then on the issue of what are these other towns that have it on their town meeting agendas for the spring? What are they doing in terms of rates? Are they looking at a flat fee? Are they looking at a tiered system? How are they calculating it? As we go into the summer, if you could try to gather some of that data through MAPC, so that when we come back for the rate setting this summer, I assume it'll be this summer, then we'll at least have a little more information of what some other communities are doing, and whether we might want to consider any changes.
So, I absolutely agree with that, it's an important piece of data to have, you know, in your toolkit as you're considering alternatives, you know. This worked for us for the first year generally, but it didn't work completely. What do other towns do, and what are the towns about to embark upon, what are they The problem with being ahead of the curve like we are is, they're all looking to us, but I will certainly see what the heck, you know, what they're looking at.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Before we move on to the environmental policy? All right, so, do you want to stay for this one, Joe? We have a...
Sure, oh, yeah.
Policy regarding environmentally preferable products procurement.